I am calling this meeting of the Plit City Council of January 13th, 2021 to order. And before we start with the pledge of allegiance to the flag, I want to just remind us all that we're pledging to the republic for which it stands. And one week ago, the flag and our republic were desecrated by an armed insurrection in an attempt to block or overthrow our elected government. Five people died, and we were lucky it wasn't much worse. And unfortunately, it may not be over yet. The ritual of pledging and taking an oath of office must not be just empty words. We are swearing to protect and defend the Constitution of the United States against all enemies, foreign and domestic. Not just elected officials, but all citizens have a duty to defend the law and to respect those elected to govern us, to govern all of us, even when we may disagree with them. Freedom of speech and assembly are guaranteed and give us the right to peacefully protest laws that we don't agree with or that we believe are unjust. And civil disobedience is a willingness to be arrested if we can't in good conscience obey something we think is unjust. But taking up arms and violence is the opposite of a government of laws. What happened last week is sedition, incited by our own president and his complicit enablers. The mob anger has been whipped up by a claim of a rigged election, despite 60 lawsuits rejected, even by appointed judges for lack of any evidence. This is just a short little comment before we do the pledge of allegiance.
Are we allowed to go that far off of topic for the agenda? Not that I agree or disagree with you. I'm just wondering if it is appropriate to do this at a meeting as an un-agendized item?
I'm making a short statement, and I believe it is within my rights to do that. And I think these are really unusual times, and I would not normally do this, but I think this is a very unusual time. And I have about less than a minute. Otherwise, I could do this as a public comment, but I'm just about done anyway. So 60 lawsuits have been rejected for lack of any evidence. The lie has, in my opinion, simply been used to try to turn a president into a dictator. One week from now, we hope to witness the peaceful transition of power to duly-elected new leaders, a tradition that's been respected for our 250-year history. This nation is founded on the ideal of liberty and justice for all under a constitution of laws, and all of us must pledge to protect this precious and fragile democracy. Let us not take it for granted. And now I would like Kathy to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call. Councilmember Stransky.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Here.
Connie.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Mayor Strong.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay. Due to the provisions of the Governor's executive orders in view of minimizing the spread of COVID-19, city council members are participating by teleconference or video conference at this meeting. And I just want to also encourage the public to know that they can also attend these meetings just as they could when we used to meet in person. Public communications are open now, and the council welcomes participation in its meetings. Comments are limited to three minutes per person, and if there were a lot of people at once, we might limit it further. There usually aren't. Public criticism of the city council, commission, boards, and agencies will not be prohibited, but no action will be taken on items. These are for comments that are on items not on our agenda. So are any members of the public wishing to address the city council? In view of the fact I can't see everybody, please unmute yourself and let me know if you are out there and want to address us.
Is this where Nuestra Alianza should speak?
I'm sorry, I can't. Oh, yes, is that Nuestra Alianza? Is it? Yes.
This is where we should speak?
Yes, this is absolutely where you should speak, on items not on our agenda.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. And then up the floor now?
Yes, you do.
Okay, thank you so much. This is Dinah Hutton. I'm attending the meeting without a good camera to ask for your help with a new project that Nuestra Alianza has started. It's called Promotores de Salud, promoters of health. And we have hired seven people to promote the health of the Latino community during this time of COVID. It's a pilot program financed by FEMA through the county. There is no one in between Nuestra Alianza and the county. We report monthly to the county. The promotores decide, they are members of the Latino community, and they decide how to go about this. They are the people who know the community the best. And they have educated people have the best to, if you have to get together for Christmas, how to go about doing that. For example, with all the windows open and the doors open and the heaters blasting so you don't freeze, with masks on, try not to get very close to people, go outside. One of the things that they're doing is talking to people who are going or coming out of stores. Places like the Dollar Store are very good for finding Latinos to talk to and to give them flyers. They've been getting shooed away from places like this, and so it's very hard for them to talk to people there. And we are asking you, if Madam Strong and Jerry Gonzalez would please sign a letter that those people can carry with them, introducing them as community health workers. They're doing a lot of other things besides that. Is anyone interested to hear what else they're doing as promoters of health? No? Okay.
Let's see if any of the... Well, yeah, do any council members have a question for Dinah Hutton on this? I don't see any at the moment, so... No, but I would like to bring this to the council later in the council member reports because I think it's a really good idea that...
I'll have to draw a letter.
So we'll bring that up at council reports. But thank you, Dinah.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other members of the public want to address the city council? Hearing none and seeing none, we will go to our first public matter on item three, which is swearing in and welcoming our new city manager, Brian Bender. I have a copy of the oath of office that he will be reciting before I do that. Brian, did you want to say anything to... You know, we're certainly welcome to... We're really glad to have you. I know you've been at work for less than a week and a half, and I already hear really good things, so would you like to say anything?
It's been a whirlwind of a week and a half, and it's exciting, and I'm enjoying every moment of it. Great staff, a lot of good problems that we're looking to get our heads around and move the organization and the community forward. So I welcome this opportunity, and I'm looking forward to serve this wonderful community.
Great. Okay, so I believe you're supposed to raise your right hand and repeat after me. I'll do this in little sections here. I, Brian Bender, do solemnly swear or affirm...
I, Brian Bender, do solemnly swear or affirm...
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
To the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation
or purpose of evasion.
Of evasion.
Thank you. And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
That I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Thank you. I now affirm, I'm not sure what the official wording is, but you've now taken the oath of office.
I'm promptly appointed as the city manager for Willets.
Right, thank you.
Now, let me...
Good. And I believe that Kathy has copies of the signed declarations. Okay, moving on. Enactment of ordinances, there aren't any tonight. Consent calendar, is the meeting minutes of December 9th. Did that happen?
Yes.
Yes. Yes, we have those on the consent calendar. Is there a motion to accept the consent calendar?
Not yet.
Okay, I heard Larry first and then Jerry. So moved by Councilmember Stransky, seconded by Councilmember Gonzalez. Any questions, any comment otherwise? Let us do a vote. Kathy, would you do that, please?
Councilmember Stransky.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Connie.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Mayor Strong.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. And in the packet, there were some informational reports on building inspection and license, business licenses. We are now going to convene as the successor agency to the redevelopment agency. So redevelopment agencies went away, but we continue to administer the funds that were in that account. And I will turn this over to, I guess, Brian or somebody else to explain that.
Mayor Strong, this is Andy Heath. I'm actually on the line to do this.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. For the record, Andy Heath, financial consultant to the city. After there, your redevelopment agency ceased to exist after 2012. At that time, the Department of Finance set out a variety of rules that allowed for former obligations of redevelopment agency, predominantly the debt that existed with the redevelopment agencies at the time across the state, fully paid until it was fully paid off, along with an administrative allowance to see those obligations through. What I have before you tonight is the Redevelopment Recognized Obligation Payment Schedule, otherwise known as the ROPS, for fiscal year 2122. We even used about six months ahead of time to get ready to begin receiving the money in June, when we started receiving the money for fiscal 2122 related to the ROPS obligations. This ROPS essentially details what is outstanding for the redevelopment agency for the city of Willets. You have a bond that you're paying on, a former tax allocation bond that was refunded actually this time last year. The debt service on that will be approximately $322,453. You've only got a couple more years to pay on that after that as well, so I think we have about two more years after next year to pay on this, and that would be fully satisfied. Along with that debt, you have bond trust fees of about $500, and then a very small administrative allowance of about $48,100 that includes costs for staff, city manager, the city finance director, anybody that actually put these items together, like Kathy, putting all the ROPS together, actually presenting this information to your successor agency and also to the countywide oversight board. Keep in mind that once this is approved, we will have to take it to Mendocino County at the end of the month and have their oversight board, the countywide oversight board, prove it throughout before we send it to the Department of Finance on February 1st. Office supplies, some telephone, other miscellaneous expenses, some overhead costs. And then we also have the county auditor controller and DOF to ask questions, and there's time that goes with that. And then we have the audit that's done every year. So if any of this $48,100 in admin fees are not spent, they will roll back into WIP and be used for the preparation of the next ROPS. So it's not like we're giving this money and we send it or anything like that. We'll only spend exactly what we need on the administration. So that's pretty much it. The total amount that is on the ROPS is $372,053, pretty relevant. And I will stop there and answer any questions your council might have.
Okay, thank you, Andy. Any questions from council members?
Yes, I have one. This is Larry. How long are we going to pay for this money to the state?
So we're actually getting money from the state. So we have, I think after this year, we have about two and a half, four years of debt service remaining on the debt issue, which we will continue to ask for from the state that is your former redevelopment tax implement. Once all that debt is paid off, everything's done for the city of Willets. And all the former tax implements that you used to get in your redevelopment agency will now, will then roll into property taxes and be distributed to all the effective tax entities that participate in the city of Willets. So you haven't got that much time or to go.
Thank you very much, Andy.
Okay.
I believe Jerry Gonzalez, you already had a question?
I have the same question Larry did, so I don't get any more.
Any other clarifications or questions? Anybody from the public want to address us on this issue? No, it's pretty arcane stuff.
Very much.
Yeah. Okay, so hearing no other comments or questions, we should have a vote on the recommended ROPS. So Kathy, oh, a motion from Jerry Gonzalez. And who would second? Greta Connie seconded the motion, the staff recommendation. So Kathy, would you take a vote, please?
Yes. Councilmember Stransky.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Connie.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Mayor Strong.
Yes.
Anyway, thank you, Andy. It's one of the more esoteric things that we do in finance here. And now we are at our city manager's report, and welcome again, Brian.
Yes, you know, like I said earlier, it was noted, first week and a half in the office here, not much to report, just still understanding the process, meeting with staff, looking at the various projects, touring facilities, trying to catch as many names of staff members as possible, and also sort of try to get out and meet with the public as well and other entities and agencies that the city coordinates with. So it's been pretty hectic. Hectic IT problems or minor snafus have all been set aside. I think we have a good system up and running, so we should be hitting the ground pretty soon here and making some progress. I do want to take the opportunity here. I'm glad within the first week and a half I had the opportunity to recognize the longevity of two staff members. Cassie Moorhead has 15 years of dedicated commitment and service to this organization, and Dusty Dooley over at Community Development has five years. What I experienced in the last year, week and a half in communicating and working alongside these two staff members, the city's in good hands, good staff members that are fully committed and want to do the right thing. So I'm pleased to say that and announce that to the council and in the public.
All right, thank you. Are there any other irons in the fire that you might want to let us know about?
Oh, sure, there's a lot. I think that right now, I'm just trying to keep it simple. I'm looking, I'm working behind the scenes on several items that have been outstanding. The previous city manager has left me a pretty defined list of directions that need to be taken, and I'm considering that as I'm putting together a plan. And I'm looking forward to reaching out to the council and see if we can get some strategic sessions going so we can create a long-range or at least midterm goal setting and direction for myself so I can help the organization.
Thank you. I have one question on that. We had been told that the construction on the trees and pavers would start this week, and I know it rained a lot, so I guess it's about to start. Do you have the latest on weather?
My understanding from what I've received from engineering, yes, the project has started, the crews have mobilized. Staff has looked at the quality of several trees that have been earmarked for first installation and the pavers as well. So once again, I'm not sure if the council realizes, but the project has been staged to work on Main Street, not a commercial, I mean, it's intersectional commercial.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Were there any other questions from council members? No? Hearing none. Department recommendations, we have an item here that I believe is on Dusty Dooley's plate, which is a request from California Conservation Corps to partially waive the requirement for construction of curb gutters and sidewalks along East Hill Road. So Dusty, take it away.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Strong. Good evening, council members. Dusty Dooley here, Community Development Director. The council is aware that the California Conservation Corps, the CCC, is planning to construct a new campus on the state-owned, approximately 27.7-acre property that is located on the north side of East Hill Road between the highway to the east and then the railroad corridor to the west, also known as the future home of the city rail trail. Access to the property will be provided from two proposed driveways off of East Hill Road. The campus has been designed to support residential needs to house approximately 120 permanent corps members as well as 26 full-time staff that otherwise meet the CCC's operational and facility needs. As noted in the agenda summary, the campus will include a total of approximately 64,000 square feet of new building construction, so certainly an exciting project for our lovely little community here. I mention all of that in part to set up the fact that our city code requires property owners who are issued building permits for new construction that have cost valuations of $10,000 or more to install new sidewalk curb and gutter to city standards along their property frontage where such improvements do not exist. The city code also provides the council with authority to waive this requirement if sufficient good cause is shown. The CCC is requesting council approval to waive the city requirement to install sidewalk curb and gutter along the approximate 680-foot-long section of East Hill Road that fronts along the southern property line. According to the CCC, they are seeking a waiver in order to minimize impact to protected onsite resources and reading verbatim from their letter, including waters of the U.S. and state riparian vegetation and four occurrences of North Coast Semper Fi grass. Staff has included a map provided by the CCC that is intended to show the anticipated area of impact resulting from construction of the sidewalk, curb, and gutter in relation to the protected resource areas. As identified in the agenda summary and resolution, staff initially recommended that the applicant be granted a partial waiver but still be required to construct sidewalk curb and gutter along East Hill Road from the proposed western driveway location to the southwest terminus of the property boundary, a distance of approximately 100 feet. Since completing the agenda packet, the staff at our engineering department was able to visit the site and review additional information provided by the CCC. Earlier today, staff provided council with a revised resolution and Exhibit H to reflect an updated recommendation from staff. Based on engineer's review, including our contract, city engineer Rod Wilburn, it appears that curb gutter and sidewalk could be built from the eastern driveway to the southwest corner of the property, approximately 280 feet, without causing impact to protected vegetation. Staff should also note that the updated resolution, as currently written, would allow staff to waive additional segments of sidewalk should it become clear that the construction of improvements would cause impact to protected vegetation that would result in the need to, for the CCC to amend their applicable permits with either the California Department of Fish and Wildlife Water Quality Control Board or Army Corps of Engineers. The, I think the concern, as I understand it from the CCC, is that if they were required to revise those permits and in a way start the review process over, it would cause project delays, and the concern is those delays and the inability of the CCC to meet certain benchmarks could potentially interfere with their funding that's currently in place to support construction of the campus. To better showcase this recommendation in relation to other existing or planned improvements, staff has provided the updated Exhibit H that shows the existing sidewalk along East Hill Road as well as a street crossing and an additional small segment of sidewalk that's envisioned as part of the city rail trail to help connect the southern terminus of the trail with the existing Hale Creek pathway there. The map also shows the recommended location of sidewalk to be installed as part of the CC campus project in relation to those other improvements I just mentioned. Staff is also recommending as a condition of any waiver that the CCC provide a connection between their property and the anticipated city rail trail for the purposes of allowing corps members easier access to the trail, which is expected to be the preferred pedestrian path between the campus and the majority of Willets, hopefully. Also, staff is recommending as a condition of the sidewalk waiver that the CCC dedicate sufficient land to the city to achieve our standard 60-foot right-of-way there along East Hill Road. Yeah, that concludes my introduction for the project, but Mayor, I also want to note that... that we have our, I believe we have our city project manager Jeremy Ronco on the line. He may want to add or clarify some of my statements and certainly we're both available to answer any questions the council or community may have. We also have, I can see a number of representatives from the CCC are online with us tonight and may wish to address the council as well. Thank you.
Okay. Jeremy, do you have anything you want to add at this point or wait for questions?
No, I'll just wait for questions. I think Dusty covered it perfectly.
Okay. So our normal thing would be just questions and clarification from council members first and then we'll open the public hearing and hear from other people who are here to address us on this and then bring it back to the council after that. So any just clarification questions? Yes, Greta, would you go ahead?
Dusty, you said that after Rod went out there and looked with you guys, it was determined that there was about 250 feet, I think you said, next to the east driveway that could be easily paved without impacting the endangered plant life. Are you meaning the western driveway, the one that's on the left and closest to the rail trail on our diagram?
So council member Connie, I'm not sure if Rod visited this site. I know Jeremy did, but Rod did take a look at some updated information that the CCC provided. And the updated recommendation is that they construct sidewalk all the way from the eastern driveway to the western property line, which is a distance of approximately 280 feet. So that's an increase of about 180 feet of sidewalk beyond the initial recommendation by staff.
Are you able to describe where that is when we're looking at this Attachment H photograph?
Yeah. Do you have the updated Attachment H that was provided earlier today?
Yes.
Okay. Let me pull that up as well real quick. This is one of the few benefits of being virtual here. Okay, so if you're looking at Attachment H here, it shows the proposed CCC project location and you have two white rectangles that indicate the western and eastern proposed driveways for the CCC. And then in orange, I'll call it, it shows staff's recommendation for the CCC to construct sidewalk between the eastern driveway and the western property line there.
To me, the eastern driveway is the one on the right. Am I looking at this wrong?
Nope, nope. North is up on the map and that's approximately 280-foot segment of sidewalk would extend from the eastern driveway to the western end of the property.
So, yeah, so Greta, you are correct. It's the one that could be on the right hand, the right hand of the two driveways as you're looking at that photo.
I'm sorry, I'm just having a hard time tracking what the difference is between the recommendation tonight versus, I mean, originally when I looked at this, the proposal was for that whole orange distance and now you're saying it's a smaller portion. Where is that?
No, I'm sorry, it's a larger portion. The original Attachment H showed a smaller segment of sidewalk extending from the western boundary to the western driveway to the western boundary. But it sounds like what you're telling me is that you've received two identical Attachment Hs?
Well, I don't have them side by side, so.
What I think that, what we're trying to clarify is the original staff recommendation was a smaller segment just from the western of the two driveways to the western edge of the property. And now the advice is that there's no biological obstacle or whatever, you know, damage that would occur if we in fact have the curb gutter sidewalk go from the eastern of the two driveways. So it's a bigger segment. It'll extend, I think Dusty said, about 280 feet rather than only 100-some feet.
Yes.
I may jump in to help with the clarification on the exhibit. I think the easiest way to look at it or consider what the amended exhibit would show is the sidewalk now would extend almost directly opposite the building to the south, that hospital building. So on the north side of the street, there will be that sidewalk almost directly opposite the building to the south. So there will be a continuous sidewalk that would intersect with the western driveway and then continue further east to the easternmost driveway. Does that help?
I thought that I understood this, but I fear that I'm confused because I thought that the point of this was to waive the sidewalk and now we've just made the sidewalk longer. So what am I missing?
Okay. So basically the city, and I'll just jump in here, Dusty. So basically, the city's requirement is that for the full frontage of the applicant's property, a sidewalk is required. The applicant has come forward to the city and asked for a waiver. So essentially, we noted it's a partial waiver. So they are installing a sidewalk. The sidewalk that they're not going to, not install, it's going to be from the eastern or that right driveway going east to the city limit. That's not going to, that's not on the project and that's what they're asking right now, what this council would consider waiving. And then the amended language that Dusty presented to the council now is that that middle segment between the two driveways, it may still come off the table depending on further analysis and assessment of the vegetation there.
Perfect. Thank you. That really helped.
Great. Okay. Any other questions from council members before we open up the public? Seeing none, we are open for some public comment on this item. And please unmute yourself if you have something to contribute. Anyone?
I'd like to, I'd like to jump in, but my name is Dan Millsap with the California Conservation Corps.
Yes, go ahead, Dan. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Strong, city council members. Thanks for taking up us on this partial recommendation. I just wanted to clarify a couple of points. First, we're looking forward to becoming a member of the community there. I think you're well aware of all the work that we have done and continue to do with the city works right now, so we're super excited to become members of the community. And I'm happy about this project and I appreciate the support Dusty and the city have given us over the last several years to get to this final push. But yeah, to clarify, we've been working since March last year, 2020, with CFW, California Department of Fish and Wildlife, Army Corps, and then the Regional Water Quality Control Board to try to mitigate these impacts to the environment. It's been very difficult. We didn't know when to purchase the property, that all these wetlands, repairing habitat of protected species of plant. And so we've worked really hard. We'll move forward and try to consult with them about these additional improvements on the road or along East Hill Road that was just presented. I need my consultant to reach out and just do an informal, if we did this, what do they think? It looked like they're going to then require additional take permits since they don't take permits on us. Potentially, or more than likely, that'll add at least 90 days to our schedule. So that's where my sense of urgency is our funding goes away June 30th. And so if you read my letter, it takes us about four months to get a contract executed to secure those funds before they go away. And based on the current climate in California, I don't know if we might be able to get any more money in the next fiscal year. So that's kind of my concern. I want to make this happen. I want to do everything that I can to kind of keep it moving along. So yeah, that's kind of it. If you have any questions, feel free to ask.
Okay. Thank you. The staff recommendation as revised, that doesn't add any threat to extend your time period, does it?
It has an increase potential of at least 90 days. I don't know. We haven't, we were waiting to see how tonight went. We just did an informal conversation, phone call with those control agencies and so we're going to move forward now and tell them, all right, we need to start evaluating those areas and those are the experts that make those opinions because they write the permits that are enforcing the protections and restrictions.
So you're saying the change that we just brought to potentially, you know, include the area between the two driveways in the curb gutter requirement, that could cause delay?
Yes. That's exactly what I'm saying.
But the original one, just from the?
I don't think so, from the western or the left driveway to the left all the way to the property line, I don't think that one would be a problem.
Okay. Well, I'd like to get staff response on that because, you know, normally the requirement if it's an endangered species or anything would be the entire frontage. But yeah.
So I mean, and I'll be letting the city know. I mean, we've been back and forth a lot, as Dusty can attest. So we'll be keeping them informed of our progress as we move forward.
We certainly, I don't think we want to endanger your funding. We are very enthusiastic about this project.
I appreciate that, Mayor. Yeah, I feel the same way.
Okay. Any other public members want to address us? And I'm not hearing any. So Dusty or Brian, do you have a comment about his concern? And I guess I wanted to know is if people are at the hospital, for example, and want to access the new trail with the rail line, is that going to be in any way impeded by the restriction or the reduction of curb and gutter and sidewalk there? We want public access to the trail.
To, just to respond to Dan's concerns, which are shared by staff, I just wanted to make it very clear that staff's recommendation includes an opportunity for staff to waive any further, any requirement to construct curb, gutter and sidewalk that would cause impact to protected vegetation and then require the amendment of those permits from those other state agencies. What, where I think there may be a difference of opinion between the CCC and city staff is, city staff is of the opinion that we have not been provided with sufficient detailed information to tell the council that definitively that the construction of the sidewalk from the eastern driveway to the western property line is going to cause impact to those areas. Our staff was out there taking measurements and looking at the existing roadway and again, it's not completely clear that those improvements would cause impact. Where I think the CCC is noting their high confidence that it appears that it will. So I think what staff is saying is, provided that they can show sufficient evidence, staff has no issue with further waiving the sidewalk requirement. And we certainly share what the mayor mentioned and what Dan Millsap with the CC mentioned in that we certainly want to make sure that we're supporting this project and not causing any unnecessary delays or costs for these folks. But I just want to make it clear that I think that's, you know, the difference with where staff's at in review of the information and where the CCC is at. And then as far as whether the waiver of a partial waiver of sidewalk interfering with the folks' ability to access the trail, there really is not any development, any significant development or opportunities at the current time for development further east of this property within the county jurisdiction and those resource lands to where staff feels like the absence of sidewalk would cause a significant deterrent from future folks' ability to access the trail at that location. We do not think that that's a significant issue in the consideration on this matter before you. And again, Jeremy, you may want to add to those comments.
Jeremy?
Well, I don't know what I have to add, but yeah, it's just, you know, for us to be able to feel comfortable making a determination one way or the other, you know, we just like to see more information than we have. But just like Dusty said, I mean, if they do show us that, you know, this is clearly going to impact that, we certainly don't have a problem, you know, of staff recommending waiving. We just don't feel super confident based on what we've seen that, you know, to make a recommendation one way or the other, I guess.
Okay. I have called for any other public comments and then we've had a little exchange about that. If there are no other public comments, I'm going to close the public hearing. Dan, did you have one more, one more sentence to say about that?
I'm sorry. I apologize. I just want to clarify, this is sufficient information. I'm going to reach out and talk to the permitting agencies and to me, if they give me a response either in a letter or an email or something like that when we update the impact maps, is that something that would be considered sufficient information? Jeremy, Dusty? Because I don't think it'll be, you know, a plans and specifications type drawing overlaid on things. We're just going to be in consultation with them and update what we provide on the permits and then share with you their response to that.
This is Dusty. Mayor, can I answer Millsap's question?
Sure. Please do.
Yes, potentially that would be sufficient evidence. And I'll even, you know, I would suggest that, you know, CCC staff, possibly consultants, along with city staff meet at the site and we have a clear understanding of the room it's going to take to construct those improvements to city standards. And we might be able to sit there on site, take a look at the roadway and get a pretty good understanding just from a quick site view as well. And it might be just based on that site view that we're able to make a determination possibly. So.
Okay. I'll set something up, Dusty.
I'm not looking for anything overly personal, just, you know.
Okay. So I see, Bruce Sato, did you want to address us? Please, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Strong, and thank you, council members and staff. I just wanted to weigh in and say that Bruce Sato here, Director of the California Conservation Corps, this is an extremely important project for us and you have our full support and commitment that we will resolve these issues with you, coordinate, collaborate and work with Willet's council and staff to ensure that this project is done correctly and properly. But know that we are absolutely committed to bringing California Conservation Corps resources to the great community of Willets and we want to be a partner not just for this year and future construction, but for decades to come. Thank you.
Thank you. That's exciting. We are really, you know, this is a fabulous project for you, but also really for Willet's. So it's really wonderful. Okay, so I am closing the public hearing. Can I, I'm just going to go ahead and make another, I guess it's a question or a comment. Since the sidewalk between the two driveways isn't really going to increase public access because there aren't any developments to the east of that and people who live at the complex will take the closest route and they have a sidewalk there, if there's any question about that, I don't see that that requiring a sidewalk there really increases public opportunity to, you know, to have pedestrian access. And I'm wondering if it would actually benefit the city more if the CCC would donate the amount or would be required to contribute the amount that they would have spent on that sidewalk to enable the city to improve some sidewalks in higher need areas than this. So that would be my thought or recommendation on our action and wanted to see how other council members feel about. council members feel about that, and also with staff.
Madge?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, I walked, I don't know how many councilmen walked that area, but I walked it, and I walked it in the rain, and what, the two maps that I have show that the sidewalk goes from the eastern one, which is approximately by another one that I looked at, is about half of the property. And so, what they're saying is that anybody that comes out of the eastern driveway has got nothing to walk on other than bare land and fence and all this kind of stuff, and I think that the sidewalk going from the trails to trails to the eastern part driveway is a necessity, and I think that it's a really good idea that they came up with, Dusty and engineering crew to do that, and I just think it's going to make it a really a nice thing, and if you really go back in and look at the ordinance that was put in in 1967, it's wavering what we have set up for the city to have, if you have any kind of reconstruction or redoing anything that we want curb and gutter in our community, and I think that what that they came up with is a really good idea, and I think that everybody can work it out, and it will come up to be a much better project by having the sidewalk going from the eastern one past the west to the rails to trails. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments from council members? Yes, Jerry, please.
I kind of agree with Larry, but at the same time, it sounds like Dusty looked at a compromise resolution to give us the latitude to get these folks into our community, and so, I kind of feel like they've got it covered, and I think we've made our wishes known, that we'd like to see the sidewalk there, but we want to give them the latitude. If I look at it, the campus folks would be the ones using it, walking to town unless they end up with some sort of access gate along their property line, that's kind of pathetic, but I also want to give them the latitude, be able to get in there and not lose their funding. As far as what you were suggesting, Madge, I think they're a government entity like us, so they have to budget things, so I suspect that we might be putting the bite on the CCC over the years, doing other good things in the communities, so I'm not tied to what you were talking about, but I think we've given the city some latitude here to get them in. That's all I can.
Thank you, other comments? Greta or Suprema? Suprema, go ahead.
I agree with staff's recommendation, and I'm very excited to see that CCC is considered Willetts for a place to put their operations, it's a great program and I'm looking forward to it.
Greta?
If that was a motion from you, Suprema, then I would like to second, I also think that we should go with the revised resolution.
We're all in fact making that motion.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilmember Rodriguez, and it sounds like a second from Councilmember Connie, if there's no further question or discussion.
I have, I have a question, so what are they trying to say, you're just going to go from the west to the city, to the county line, I mean, to their property line?
The revised recommendation, well, maybe, Dusty, why don't you describe your revised recommendation?
Yeah, Councilmember Stransky, I believe the motion that's been made is to follow staff's revised recommendation, which is to construct sidewalk from the eastern driveway to the western property line.
Thank you very much. With the potential to revise that if need because of whatever, the environmental impacts don't enable that, then you would go ahead and waive it? It gives you the latitude.
That is correct.
Okay.
Did any, excuse me, this is Larry again, did anybody walk the area and look at it?
I think they did, and they will before they waived it.
But you're voting on it tonight, what I'm saying is...
Larry, I didn't, I didn't walk the property today, but as a runner over many years, I have run and walked that stretch of land hundreds of times, so I felt confident and comfortable enough with my knowledge of the space.
Thank you.
Kind of in the same boat, Larry, this is Jerry, I biked that area and I've walked it many times, both professionally and as a kid, growing up here.
Okay, so we had a few more comments, and it's time, I believe, for a vote, so Kathy, please call and roll.
Thank you. Councilmember Stransky?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Connie?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mayor Strong?
Yes, so, and we are trusting our staff to work with the CCC to make sure that we are on solid, yeah, I want to say solid ground, but it's sort of the opposite, to make sure that this is a reasonable requirement. Okay, thank you. And we have other departments, city clerk or any other administrative or city clerk comments?
I have nothing tonight, thank you.
Nothing tonight, okay, we have finance, we've already heard from Andy earlier, and I believe we're going to be hearing from him next meeting, but if he has anything for tonight? No? And human resources, Karen, are you there?
I'm here, but I have nothing, thank you.
Okay, city attorney, Jim Lance?
Nothing to report, thank you.
Public safety, we have our chief, Viziraga here, do you have anything?
I didn't have anything prepared, but as we're going to the meeting here, I just wanted to make you aware, I'm sure most of you are, but we do have a new police officer in our field training officer program, Natalie Higley, graduated from the academy, called it to the Redwoods, she started with us about almost two weeks ago, and is currently in the field training program, and she'll be there for, doing that for about four weeks before she goes out solo, I'm sorry, about four months before she goes out solo. We also have a new dispatcher in training, Haley Silva, she's also, she's a local woman from here, and she started training last week, and so that'll show up some of our dispatch resources and stuff, so just to make you aware of that.
I have one question, and that is, I've heard from Congressman Heffman that there's might be actions or protests or something in all 50 states, and it might, probably more likely to be in Sacramento, but they're saying it could be cities as well, are we just, you know, aware that there could be protests and prepared for that?
The FBI and Department of Justice did send out alerts to all law enforcement agencies regarding the planned demonstrations at all state capitals, which for us would be Sacramento, obviously. We don't expect anything locally here, we don't have any field offices here in our city, but we are taking a look at our critical sites, critical structures, city hall, wastewater is secure there, and then just keeping an eye on what's going on, if it's the closest, you know, if I had to guess, the closest it would get to, it would probably be the Bay Area, San Francisco, Oakland, those types of things. In that event, we probably lose some of our CHP partners and resources as they would be deployed there, as well as Sacramento, but we've got good relationships with everybody else in the county, so everybody is pledging to, you know, be there for each other in the event that something happens, so we've got lines of communication open with all of our partners, law enforcement wise, and we're going to be vigilant as far as our structures, our critical sites here in Willetts.
Okay, thank you. Moving along, community development, Dusty, do you have anything to add?
Not at this time, thank you, Mayor.
Public works and engineering, I shouldn't lump those together, but do either of those departments have anything they want to report?
This is Jeremy again, I could just confirm as Brian did earlier, that, you know, the main street project did start this week, we started on the, north of Commercial Street in front of the St. Francis and the Redwoods Church, so you might not have seen us up there, but they started excavating and connected irrigation to that first planter, and materials are on site, and so far, so good.
See, and when will they be moving to the core in the, you know, south of Commercial?
The plan right now is to get everything north of Commercial done first, Granite suggested starting up there where it's a little less crowded, just to get the sort of startup kinks worked out before we got into the, you know, the heart of downtown and where it's a little tighter, so I thought that was a pretty good plan, and so far, there haven't been too many kinks, it's going pretty smoothly, but, you know, I hesitate anything from, I want to say, two to three weeks, it's hard to gauge time because startup is typically a little slower, so not sure what pace we're working at quite yet.
Okay, thank you. And I believe that completes any department recommendations, we're now at city council committee and board and agency reports, that's for internal to the city, I believe, as opposed to, well, I guess, yeah, do we want to go through all of the different agencies that we, that some of us sit on, is that this item on the agenda?
Yes, it is.
Okay, all right, well, then I will just go in order as I see us on the screen here, Suprema, do you have any reports from your...
Nothing new to report tonight.
Okay, Greta?
Museum Advisory Board met yesterday, elected new officers, which are actually the same officers as last year, we've agreed to revise our meeting schedule to every other month, beginning month after next, and we are working, are helping the museum with the creation of a new, what is it called, I want to say Friends of the Library, but it's not that, it's Friends of the Museum, to help build membership for the museum, and looking forward to the time when the museum can reopen to the public and working on some plans for maybe like an open house, just kind of, you know, re-welcoming the committee back, which is something that actually our city manager mentioned to me in my meeting with him earlier this week, as a possibility for bringing the community back to city hall when we can reopen, and I wanted to throw that out there, I thought it was a great idea, so that's the only report I have.
Okay, Jerry Gonzalez?
I'm on the League of Cities, and tomorrow I'm doing a public safety policy committee meeting, but I'm on LAFCO, and they met on the fourth, and the big issue there was, it's going to be a policy change, spare influence policy development process, the idea was that the, LAFCO wanted to basically capture some of the expenses when they do these, and several of the cities, including Dusty submitted comment, and yes, the idea was we, for Carrie Brown and John, I'm forgetting his name at the moment, where they fell off the representation from the county, or the supervisors, the new supervisor who's worn in, wanted to try and finish that out, but it looked like this is a complicated issue, so it's been kind of put off, but I really enjoyed having all the discourse from all the, it's not so much discourse, but at least all the comments from the cities to help educate everybody, including LAFCO, so that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Stransky?
Yes, I, as a recommendation, and I want people to start thinking about it, I went up to the water plant, and the water plant has been pretty much deleted from the agendas as far as doing anything, and we have three valves on the Centennial, at the bottom of the dam, and at the end of Vecco Road that really need to be worked on, and they're going to be expensive, and I think the council ought to look at that with the extra money that they're giving out to know what we need to make our city have a good water supply, and so I think that ought to be on the agenda, so that's my recommendation to the council, and that's all that I have, thank you.
Okay, I have a few reports, some may be explanations, so the Economic Development and Financing Corporation will be meeting tomorrow at 2:00 in the afternoon, and on their agenda is interviewing a new, a potential new executive director, the other, the one that we've had for about three or four months is just interim, and he's not planning to continue, and they also put out to all of the investors in the direct public offering that was enabling a lot of local people to invest in the wool mill, the Mendocino Wool and Fiber Company down in Ukiah, they asked all of those investors if they could extend the time period for that loan by two more years, so I think a vast majority of the investors, I think there's about 80 investors in it, have agreed, but I will hear more about that at tomorrow's EDFC meeting, and I think they're also planning to extend EDFC's goal or mission to not be only Mendocino and Lake County, but also Sonoma County, because they are handling quite a few loans now in Sonoma County, so that's, I believe, on the agenda for tomorrow's EDFC meeting. The Solid Waste Management did not meet in December, but they're going to be meeting on January 21st at 10:00 in the morning, and I know one of the items on their agenda will be the treatment of treating wood waste disposal, not treating them, but disposing of treated wood, which is kind of tricky, so they've had to take it on and allow both commercial and residential users to bring in treated wood waste, so that's an interesting new thing. And Sonoma Clean Power is the third one that I wanted to report on, and that is, the representative from Mendocino County Cities has been Jonathan Torres of Point Arena, he did not run for reelection, so he is no longer eligible to represent the Mendocino County Cities, and the counties, whatever they're called, city, they designate city representatives to things that the county is involved in, they will need to decide what happens next. I'm the alternate, and I do not have time to continue doing Sonoma Clean Power, I might go to a meeting just until we have that resolved, but it's really a fascinating agency, and they're doing some incredible stuff, and I'd love to have either Willetts or maybe Fort Bragg have a representative to Sonoma Clean Power, cap of our county cities, but I can't, I can't do it, so if any of you have interest in it, please let me know. I also wanted to announce that they, I guess periodically, run volunteer food distribution, mostly they do that in Sonoma County, the Redwood Empire Food Bank, but I think they do a lot of public service as well. We did it, okay, I think that is all of the agency reports, so let's go to my mayor's appointments, and I just wanted to apologize... Oh, and I just wanted to apologize to Suprema, I have not been addressing you as vice mayor, and I should remember to do that, it's new, you know, new to me to do that, so, but it's a good honorific to have, and I'm glad you're our vice mayor. So, on our ad, I guess I'll just go through these, since nobody has a, you know, since we can't do it with pieces of paper together. So the Finance Committee is going to be myself as mayor, Suprema Rodriguez as vice mayor, and Jerry Gonzalez will be the alternate. Wastewater and Water is Jerry Gonzalez and Larry Stransky. The Revite Ed Committee is Suprema Rodriguez and Larry Stransky. Regional Boards are mostly going to be the same as they were, Jerry Gonzalez to the League of Cities with Larry Stransky as alternate, and MCAG is going to be Greta Connie as the main representative, and Larry Stransky as the alternate. EDFC, I have down that Larry Stransky is willing to be an alternate, and that's another one where I, my heart is totally in that, but I'm finding, you know, less and less time to do a good job of it, so I might talk to Larry about being more active on it, if he's willing. The Solid Waste Management Authority, I'm currently the chair of that, so I do want to continue to do that, to give that agency some stability going forward, and there is no alternate at this point. MTA is Suprema Rodriguez, and there's no alternate at this point, and she's chair of that. The Mendocino County City Selection Committee, that's the one that we need to consult about the Sonoma Clean Power thing. Jerry Gonzalez is LAPCO representative, and Greta Connie is for the museum. Ad-hoc committees, we are, I think there's several that are basically no longer needed, so that some of those are coming off the list from last year. The two that we do have active are the Ethics Committee, which is me and Greta Connie, and we haven't met for a while, but I think we do need to get back to that, and the mobile food trucks and mobile vendors, it's not only food trucks, mobile vendors, which has been Suprema Rodriguez and me, and I was thinking that we could just sort of keep putting it off, but I'm hearing more and more interest in that, and I would, again, welcome any other council member who would like to serve with Vice Mayor Suprema Rodriguez on that, because I think we do need two council representatives, and I'm, my plate's pretty full, if I have to, I'll keep doing it, but I'd really love it if somebody else has some time, because it's kind of a complicated thing, and we're going to need some staff support on that as well, to the extent that we get, you know, get busy with it in time for, say, the summer, when there'll be more interest. Is there any council member who has any interest in either the mobile vendor, ad-hoc committee, or the, what was the other one I said? Sonoma Clean Power, I guess. Hearing that, we'll keep our ears open. For Sonoma Clean Power, I really, I hope that Fort Bragg will step up, but anyway, great, so that is my proposed committee roster, and now we're going on to our last couple of agenda items. Council member reports, I've already done that part, if there's anything else that wasn't already brought up, or good and welfare, let's, oh, yes, Greta Connie, go ahead.
I've made this recommendation, I think, to you privately, Madge, and I just would like to put this out there, I think it's being worked on, but for the public record, I would strongly recommend that the council get together for some form of retreat to talk about communication within the council, it's something that I think is important, we've all talked about it various points, and I think it would be a great idea, I've mentioned that Bob Peralt has offered to assist us, and I would just like to make that recommendation, if anyone else supports it, that'd be cool.
This is Larry, and I really totally support it.
This is Suprema, and I support it.
I support it too. And I do too. And I think Brian does have that on his list of things that he's getting to pretty darn quickly, and checking with Bob Peralt, for example, his availability, and I'm thinking that's going to happen relatively soon, maybe not in January, because, you know.
One of the things I wanted clarification on, Madge, was, my impression was that maybe what Brian was working on was actually a goal-setting session, which I think is also a fantastic idea, but what I'm talking about is something specifically for the council, so that we can build our relationships better, and learn maybe some better techniques for communication.
Okay, I do support that too, so, all right. And I also just remembered that I wanted to bring back up the recommendation that Dinah Hutton made during the public comments, I don't, what she's wanting is just a letter that I and Jerry Gonzalez could sign, and perhaps Chief Lizaraga could sign also, basically introducing these health workers that are reaching out to the Hispanic community, and letting the business people know that they are doing work that's very, very important, especially right now during the pandemic, to communicate and get resources to the Hispanic community, and it would, I think it's just a letter to say these people are working on behalf of the county and under the direction of Resta Alianza, I don't know that that requires a formal action by the city council, but I just want to make sure that it's okay for Jerry and I to sign something on city letterhead to that effect, and, so Jerry, yes?
Yeah, and I think that Chief originally reached out to me because she thought I was the mayor still, and political, yeah, with you, and, but I think the idea is that it legitimizes what they're doing, and considering that most of our COVID cases in the county have been Hispanic folks, the idea is that they're trying to go out there and give them the tools and the information they need, so it kind of helps stop this, and then along those lines, I saw a press release earlier, that, I was supposed to vaccine clinics, and to the extent that we can, I would like to see whatever city facilities or city corporation, we could open those up as those become available, because sooner we get people vaccinated and better people following the rules, the quicker we can get things opened up for our businesses.
Okay, so Chief Lizaraga, I see you, yeah, would you like to comment?
I would be in support of that, and if you wanted, if you wanted my signature on that, I don't see an issue with that, I'm strong proponent of, you know, testing and the vaccines as they become available and stuff, so you've got my support on that.
Yeah, they're also wanting to provide resources when people have, you know, whatever, if they're not aware of all the guidelines, or they can't meet outdoors because of the weather, how can they enable that, and just to get help and resources too, especially to the Hispanic community, not only for COVID precautions, but in general, for them to, yeah, yes, Greta?
I wanted to ask about the testing event that happened last Friday at the Senior Center, Willets PD actually posted about it on their Facebook page, which I thought was a great service to the community, my husband and I both went and got tested, I know Vice Mayor Rodriguez also did as well, and I was told that they had a really great turnout despite the fact that it was very short notice to the community, they had more than 100 people who were tested that day, and it was a two-hour window, I wonder if there are any other discussions in the works to offer another testing event here in Willets, there was definitely some chatter on Facebook from members of the community who would have loved to have gone, but it was, A, when they, it was in the morning, so they were schooling children, homeschool, or they were at work, or they didn't get enough notice, and I think it would be, if we were able to, it would be great if the city could partner for another such event, and maybe be able to give the community more notice, and at a time when more people could access it, I do think that there's an interest, and as Chief Lizaraga has pointed out, you know, testing is great for our community, we have to work harder to identify positive cases and be able to help people isolate and quarantine themselves so that we can slow the spread.
We got the word from, or made connection with County Health, I think it was Wednesday, late Wednesday, and so I talked to them on the phone, and, you know, I said, how are you spreading the word, because I haven't heard anything about it other than this phone call, and so I asked them for permission to be able to post it on our website, because we do get a lot of hits on our posts, and so I'm glad that we got at least that kind of a turnout, because I think they were, we're going to be able to accommodate up to 200. So I will reach out to County Health again, or the person that I talked to, and see if there's any other planned events, or if, can we get another testing site here, and maybe with a little bit more notice, we can get, we can maximize the number of test paid that they have.
Chief Lizaraga, if you're able to do something like that, would you consider sharing your post with Vice Mayor Rodriguez and myself, we're both very active on social media, and we, I think we would both be happy to help push out the message.
Yeah, absolutely, whatever forum we can use to spread the word, you know, as well as, if we get enough of a notice, going to the weekly and any other sources of information or resources we can use to get that word out.
If I may, I just want to jump in as well, just confirm what the police chief is saying, that yes, we receive, I received a call late Wednesday afternoon about trying to locate a location to accommodate the county staff to do the tests, they had up to 200, first come, first served, and knowing my lack of knowledge of the community, I had to reach out to the staff here, put them on the County Health to the Senior Center, and made that happen, and brought in the police chief for just traffic and overall control in case there was more than, more individuals seeking tests than they had the capacity for, so we'll reach out to County Health and see if we can do something, I was a participant on a virtual call this morning with the rest, the other city managers in the county here, with the county health official, and apparently there is, Willets does have another outbreak, so maybe we can use that for justification for additional testing.
Great, good to hear that.
And we'll do the posting, we'll try to do a cross-posting on various social media outlets.
Everything we can do to keep that moving, great. I just wanted to not leave the loose end, is there no objection to Jerry and myself and Chief Lizaraga sending out this letter for the, I can't remember the name of the group, the promoters of health?
Resta Alianza.
Yeah, Resta Alianza and the promoters of health, it's in Spanish, Promotores de Salud. If there are no objections, we're just going to go ahead and draft that letter and get it out. I don't hear it, okay, I see a thumbs up, good. So that was good, any other good and welfares to bring? And I am not hearing any? Oh, Greta, yes?
All right, I'll just do a quick one, I just wanted to say I've spoken to a lot of retailers in the post-holiday wind down here, and I think that it's pretty clear across the board that our community came out in droves to support their small businesses during the holidays, and as a small business owner myself, I just want to say thank you, and we really appreciate the community's engagement and support during a, what was an incredibly challenging year for so many, so thanks so much.
That's wonderful, thank you so much for that report. And I believe that the only other thing is for us to go into closed session, and we have a different call-in for that, because it's closed, and it's just about eight, so let's give ourselves about 10 minutes, and then call into that number, is that, or five minutes, how about five after eight, that's about seven minutes, okay, we'll see you in the closed session at 8:05. Thank you all, and the meeting, the open session meeting is adjourned at 7:56.